Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 1:30. We will now call to order the, what is this? August 29, 2018 Meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater and Mediterranean Sea Board of Directors. I'd ask everyone to please rise. And Robert, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Role call, please.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Aronio.
Yes.
Director Craven.
Yes.
Director Borchardt.
Yes.
I also want to acknowledge in the audience our alternates Mike Mobley and Andy Waters. Anybody else I didn't see out there? Let's see. Agenda review, any changes?
No.
Thank you. Public comments. This is an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters not otherwise on today's agenda is welcome to step forward and do so. Having received no cards, seeing none, we'll move on then to board member comments. Starting on my right, Robert?
Over the past month, I came on in and met with staff in order to go over some AMI implications for MNI and how our SCADA systems operate. I teleconferenced them into our SCADA system saying, "Take a look at the live action of it and the trending and what data typically goes on with the SCADA system," and identified some issues that we're going to have to address as to how to make sure that our systems stay secure and that we don't accidentally open a tunnel while we're trying to get the information out that would allow someone to come back in. And also the difficulties of understanding the different platforms that MNI people work with that all accomplish the same thing. That was it.
Thank you. David? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, there is one change I should note to the proposed change to the minutes of July 25, the sixth line on the third page is in error. We want to basically redact that sentence. And with that proposed change, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is that the one starting, Mr. Bondi?
Starting, he said that.
Third page.
Page three of five, sixth line down.
Twenty-fifth, page three.
Which item is that?
It says.
Is it twenty-fifth?
Minutes of the twenty-fifth.
They're both, they're both the twenty-fifth.
Oh, they're both the twenty-fifth.
No. Oh, it's the regular meeting.
Ah, sorry.
Not the special meeting, the regular meeting.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay. With that proposed change, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move the approval.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on then to item number three on the agenda, the groundwater sustainability plan update.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board. For the record, Kim Lo, Fox Canyon GMA staff. So this is your monthly update on the progress for the GSP development for the Three Basins. And this will be principally, well be entirely, a DUDAC presentation. So I will ask Dr. Jill Weinberger to come up and begin her presentation.
Good afternoon. I am Jill Weinberger with DUDAC, and I'm here to provide a status update for you, as Kim just said. And we're going to be focusing today on the water quality approach, which is a discussion we've had over the past few meetings here. And bringing this back to your attention for some direction from the board on a few of the issues that we're going to be talking about. The pointer. So.
I'm just going to pull this down slightly.
Ah. Is that a comment, Kim? So the, there are several water quality concerns in the Three Basins that have been identified, historically discussed, and many different plans through the years, and these are also identified in the GSP. They have different sources for the concerns, and they're not universal to every basin. So we're going to tackle these individually because of the differences between them. We're going to talk first about the nitrate concentrations in the Oxnard Four Bay, which are typically, in some wells, are above forty-five milligrams per liter, which is the maximum contaminant level for nitrate in drinking water. There are also concerns about sulfate and TDS concentrations in the western Los Poses Basin, the western Los Poses Management Area. Those concentrations actually exceed the regional board water quality objectives in that basin. There are some concerns about surface water infiltration in east Los Poses, in the east Los Poses Management Area. That surface water is external, coming in from outside the basin, infiltrating and increasing the total dissolved solids, TDS, and chloride concentrations in east Los Poses. That surface water used to make it all the way into Pleasant Valley and contributed to increasing TDS and chloride in Pleasant Valley. Now the concern is more of subsurface flow. So you don't have surface flow making it to Pleasant Valley except in stormwater conditions. So really, the primary concern is subsurface flow of the same water from east Los Poses into Pleasant Valley. Concerns about brine migration upward into the aquifers from below. So this is deeper water that can migrate, has the potential to migrate upward into the aquifers, has high TDS and chloride concentrations, and also the release of conate water, or pore water, along the coastal portion of the Oxnard Basin. Pore water. So water that is trapped in the pores of the sediment. And we'll talk about that a little more in just a minute. I think we're all quite aware that the GSP and Sigma are very new to everyone across the state. And water quality is one of the issues that every basin has been wrestling with, and the guidance from DWR is not clear on the issue. So for the preliminary drafts, the approach that we adopted was to ask the simple question that DWR spelled water quality as a sustainability indicator for the basin. So the question that we asked is, does water quality degradation, is it caused by groundwater production for these basins? So in that sense, is it an indicator of sustainable production from the basins? And the approach then was, okay, if yes, it can be tied to groundwater production, then we will spell out specific concentration, minimum thresholds, and measurable objectives. If it cannot be tied to production, then we would certainly elaborate on the existing programs that are, have been in place to address water quality concerns. We would suggest additional studies to ensure that this continues to be monitored. Monitoring would still occur. There would be updates. And we know that this is an adaptive management process. And so as new data is developed and as new data is brought in, these things would be reevaluated. That was the approach for the preliminary draft. So we're going to walk through each of these concerns and take a look at the preliminary draft approach. And in some cases, based on stakeholder feedback, we've actually gone back and revised our approach. This is exactly what Sigma is looking for. This is why you released the preliminary draft GSPs, is to elicit this stakeholder feedback and understand how this impacts the basins. So starting with nitrate concentrations in the Four Bay, when we ask that simple question of, are nitrate concentrations tied to groundwater production? What we're looking at here is the plot on the left. Groundwater production is shown in gray, nitrate concentrations are shown in orange. And there is no easy tie between these two. So you've got periods of high extraction with lower nitrate concentrations. You've got periods of sort of an intermediate extraction with higher nitrate concentrations. But it's all over the map. Here we've got a higher nitrate, excuse me, higher extraction, lower nitrate concentration. Here, there's no extraction and nitrate concentrations are increasing. So what is the source of this? Well, first of all, it's a legacy, the source of the nitrate is a legacy issue from previous land use practices and also from septic system discharges. And the reason that it's so variable is not tied to extraction so much as it is to spreading. So what we actually see here is when we have water, when United has water available to spread from the Santa Clara River, the concentration of nitrate in the Santa Clara River water is much lower than it is in the groundwater, and it dilutes the concentration in the groundwater. And there's a good tie between nitrate concentrations in the Four Bay and the ability, the availability of water to spread. Yeah.
If I could, that makes sense about the spreading. Excuse me. But also, a correlation that is not as strong, but I think that at least needs to be asked is, if you take the three peak pumping time periods, there are 2004, 2008, 2010, 2012, then you could say about a year later, you see a spike, the spike grows each time in nitrate concentration. So you see there's a small spike there about 2005, right? Where it moves up. There's a, there's a bigger spike after the 2008, about 2009, and then after 2012, you've got this spike in 2014. I'm not, I'm not saying that's a cause, but it is, it is a correlation.
Right. So you could, from this one plot, I certainly see what you're saying, and you, and you could take that as sort of a delayed impact. I haven't shown all of the, all of the data we have for this. And the real tie here, I mean, the fact of the matter is, nitrate concentration is absolutely tied to groundwater level. And it's, it's actually not delayed by a couple of years. You see a relative immediate impact. And that groundwater level tie, again, there are two ways of looking at it, oh, excuse me, I didn't mean to forward that. There are two ways of looking at it. One is to say, well, groundwater levels are tied with production, right? But the other, in the Four Bay, is to say groundwater levels are really tied to spreading. And so the, the primary impact, when you look at the whole of the data set, is to say that it's groundwater spreading that allows dilution of the nitrate concentrations in the groundwater in the Four Bay. Again, I will emphasize this here. What I'm presenting are the analyses that we did and the staff recommendations, but this is absolutely open for your discussion and revision. So right now, based on the data that we have, based on the ability to continue participating in management programs outside of the regulatory hook of Sigma, the staff recommendation for nitrate concentrations in the Four Bay is to continue using the preliminary draft approach, which is to say not to adopt a specific concentration threshold for nitrate for that part of the basin.
Jill, has that approach, the approach from the preliminary drafts been discussed with DWR? Have they, have they said anything about whether or not that approach is consistent with their regulations?
Let me start by saying I have not personally spoken with DWR about this issue. My, I know that in various forums, I am blanking on the name of the Sigma program manager for DWR. He's said that he will be looking at people's approaches, basins' approaches to water quality, and that they are working on coming up with a more specific guidance document for water quality.
Chair West, maybe I can help answer that. I did participate in a workshop down in Orange County where the draft best management practices were presented by DWR. And Trevor Joseph is the individual that Jill was blanking on. It's a lot easier to think of things sitting there than standing here, I can tell you from experience. And so DWR got more feedback, as I understand it, on the groundwater quality sustainability indicator than any other. And they have delayed completing the draft BMP, or the BMP guidance document because they're still struggling with how to address that. And so DWR was, and Trevor Joseph, they're, were fairly non-committal, but they're basically, you need to address it, you need to explain, you need to explain your rationale, why you are proposing what you're doing. So they're not ready to buy off on anything, but this would be discussed in detail in the GSP. I think the plan is to really elaborate on the discussion on groundwater quality and explain the, the approach. But it is, again, as Jill laid out, it's not, they've not made any discussion, decisions on that, and they are struggling with their guidance on water quality.
Based on what Kim just said, I think the risk here of pursuing this approach is that DWR would request that the GSP revisit the approach. I don't think the risk, based on my reading of the guidance and of the legislation, I don't think the risk is a rejection of the GSP. It would be, you know, we've accepted the GSP, we would like you to revisit these sections for further review. Moving to conate water in the Four Bay, excuse me, on the coast, in the upper aquifer systems along, in the Oxnard Basin. I want to be very clear with this. This is not seawater intrusion. So this is an increase in chloride and TDS concentration related to groundwater levels. It is separate from seawater intrusion. And the plot here shows the tie to groundwater elevation. So the, the source of this is that as you lower the groundwater elevation in this aquifer, you can squeeze out water that has been trapped from the time that the formation was deposited. And so this is old water that's getting squeezed in the formation. And you'll see actually from this plot that, as, if I can pull this up, so this is groundwater elevation in blue, this is chloride concentration in green, and these chloride concentrations are actually higher at this end than seawater concentrations of chloride. So as the groundwater concentration goes up, chloride, groundwater elevation goes up, chloride concentration goes down, and you'll see this very immediate impact of change in groundwater elevation on chloride concentration. The approach here is a little bit different.
Jill, excuse me, but why do you suppose there are increases in chloride concentration in 2005 and 2010?
Well, in 2005, I think it's, it's tied to water level. So if I can pull this up.
Oh, I see it. Thank you.
That one's tied. This one is less clear. So we don't see quite that same decrease in, in water elevation. And I'm not sure I have a great explanation for that. I know the, the folks at United have been looking at this a lot. They, they may know more than I do. But overall, it's, it's a pretty clear tied up to water levels. The approach here is a little different. Again, we did not spell out a specific concentration minimum threshold for this. But the reason for that is that we are waiting on the results of the groundwater modeling for seawater intrusion. So we know we have to set groundwater elevations that will prevent seawater intrusion in the basin. When those, when we get that dialed in from the groundwater modeling, we have to go back and compare the elevations that we see that will prevent seawater intrusion from the elevations that we see here for release of conate water into the system. We will pick, in this case, I'm not giving an actual number, I'm throwing out a theory, theoretical number that is, I've picked out of the air. Suppose the model comes back and says, "We need to maintain groundwater elevations at ten feet means a level." Well, that is the more protective level. At ten feet, we're not seeing conate water increasing the chloride concentration. In fact, we see that at five feet here, we keep chloride concentrations at bay. So we adopt the ten-foot level as protective of both. If the inverse is true, and the model says, "Well, to protect against seawater intrusion, you can have it right at sea level," then in fact, we would go back and protect, and take this five-foot level to be protective of both.
Two quick questions. How do we measure conate, conate water from seawater intrusion?
How do we differentiate it?
Yeah.
Well, there are a lot of very complicated geochemical ways that you can do it. This.
So there, there's just, is there just a different scientific marker for one versus the other essentially?
Yeah, there's a difference.
And we have some reliable way of making the distinction between the two.
We can, we can distinguish.
And we would, of course, still monitor both of those, even though we set it at ten. We would still monitor both of those.
Yes, yeah.
And if, and if for some reason we started to see a rise in that, we would have to figure out what's going on.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And I, and I, again, this whole process does not assume that we know everything about the basins from the start. So monitoring has to continue. There are these update processes, there's reporting, so that is built in to all of this. Yes, there would still be monitoring. So the recommendation here is to use the preliminary draft approach, which is still not to necessarily, not to select a specific concentration threshold, but instead to review the more protective of the two groundwater elevations and adopt that to protect against both seawater intrusion and conate water release. Upward migration of salts in Pleasant Valley and Oxnard, this again is actually deeper water that again is formation water, was trapped at the time that these formations were deposited. If you lower the pressure in the overlying aquifers and the water underneath is at a higher pressure, you can theoretically induce groundwater migration up from below. And that's a concern. So if you lower water levels in the overlying aquifers, you can induce this migration. You have to have a pathway for it to happen, but it can certainly happen. And there's a pathway in Pleasant Valley that's been thought about through the Bailey Fault would be a path that would allow this migration to happen. Here, I'm sorry that we've reversed the colors, but here, the green is now groundwater elevation in one well in Pleasant Valley, it's a deep well. And the blue is chloride concentration. You will see at the end of the record that there is an uptick in chloride concentration. Overall, these chloride concentrations are orders of magnitude below what we were looking at in the previous slide, but, but there still is an increase, and it can impact water quality. I don't in any way want to minimize that. The concern here is that unlike the previous slide, there's no way to set a groundwater elevation that directly ties to a chloride concentration. There's not an apparent relationship in this plot between groundwater elevation and chloride Having said that, the, the approach would be just what we talked about before, not to adopt at this point a concentration minimum threshold because we don't have the data to support it, but to continue monitoring and continue evaluating this as we move forward with the additional GSP updates. Moving to east Los Poses. This is certainly one of the areas for which we got a lot of stakeholder feedback, a lot of very great comments across the board on this. We really appreciate the stakeholder feedback on this. And what I'm showing is a little bit complicated. The, the point is not to look at the concentration at every well here, but I've called out these orange and yellow, yellowish wells on the map. Those are wells in which the concentration of total dissolved solids exceeds a thousand milligrams per liter. They're more or less along the Royal Los Poses because we've got infiltration of surface water that's bringing that into the basin. The bright yellow numbers, there are the zones from the regional board water quality, regional board basin plan. And it's a little bit hard to see here, but there are in fact, yellow lines that denote where those zones are. So this zone one applies to a big region here, this is zone three, two, and four. And the basin plan acknowledges that there has been historical degradation of water quality in this, in this management area. And in fact, the different zones are listed down here for the different concentrations for the water quality objectives for these constituents. So zone one has lower concentrations of TDS than two or three for the water quality objectives. Zone four here has the lowest at 250 milligrams per liter. Based on stakeholder feedback, revisiting the data, looking at the approach, and the strongly expressed desire to be consistent with the salt nutrient management plans and the TMDLs and the other work that's going on in the basin, we have actually switched from the preliminary draft approach. So it's not caused by groundwater production, it's still caused by infiltrating surface water, but this is, this is a response, direct response to the comments that we received. And so what we would propose now for this would be to adopt minimum thresholds that are equivalent to the concentrations in the basin plan for the different zones.
Jill, given the existing levels of TDS and chlorides and the like, what, what are the practical implications of adopting these minimum thresholds? And is that something the TAG has looked at?
The TAG has not looked at this yet. This is somewhat hot off the presses. I will say that if we look at the distribution of where the wells are, so the lighter yellowish, orangish color here is between 1,000 and 1,500 milligrams per liter. So in zone two, if I can pull this up, these again are, have concentrations that are less than 1,500 milligrams per liter of TDS. So we're still okay for zone two on TDS there. Zone three, this darker orange is between 1,000 and 1,500. So it's, it's pretty close. It's I think at 1460, 1480, something like that. So you're nudging right up against it, but you're, you're within it for zone three. It's these wells here in zone one that are the current concern. So zone one, we've got a TDS concentration of 700, and we've, and we've got concentrations in these wells that are 1,530, 1,500, sort of on those orders. So this is, this is the revised approach, and there will be implications for that. And that could be, you know, additional replenishment fees in the basin. It could mean reduced operational flexibility in the basin. So it's something for stakeholders to contend, the board to consider. But this was very strongly suggested by many, many stakeholders in the basin. We got a lot of letters on this. So the recommendation from staff on this is to revise the preliminary draft approach and in fact, adopt concentration minimum thresholds that are, that are equivalent to the basin management objective, sorry, the water quality objectives from the basin plan, regional board basin plan.
Jill, would you go back a slide?
Sure.
So in that orangey dot that you just highlighted, it's bumping right up against the limit.
This guy?
Wherever it was. I guess that one's the fifth.
One of these, yeah.
Yeah. What is it that this agency would do to decrease or deal with that level? What's in our power to fix?
You may be better equipped to answer that than I am. There are certainly projects that could be adopted to reduce the, the. There are certainly projects that could be adopted to reduce the concentration of salts in the basin. That involves desalting. I think at this point, the thought is to limit the spread of this. And we can talk about how you set minimum thresholds. This has also not yet been fully fleshed out, but how, how you set minimum thresholds at various wells throughout the zone. So DWR doesn't require that every single well be above the minimum threshold for you to be in, found sustainable. You can, in fact, set your monitoring network and say, "Hey, we acknowledge that this well's got problems already. What we're really trying to do is protect these other ones. Here's what we set forth as being sustainable based on our analysis currently, and if two of the 20 wells that we're monitoring show increases in TDS above this concentration, then we're no longer sustainable."
I appreciate what you're saying there. And, in fact, stakeholders in that area have been talking about desalting poor groundwater in that specific part of the East Los Poses for quite a while. There's been talk of regional plans or various things. What is it this agency does to meet those requirements? My, where I'm going with this is that, you know, obviously, from your previous thoughts and then change into this new method-
Yeah.
Do we lock ourselves into a corner by addressing a minimum threshold that we actually have no ability to change? Because isn't it not the case that these-
I think-
-TDS concentrations are due to wastewater discharges and historic problems in the sediments of the area and that? How is it we, as a groundwater management agency, let's just, I mean, limiting pumping? How is limiting pumping going to solve that problem?
I absolutely see your point and I, I understand it because that's certainly something that we wrestled with when we were preparing these minimum thresholds as well, is what is the tie to groundwater pumping? And if the only lever that the agency has is to impact groundwater production, then we may be talking about shifting the location of groundwater production in the basin. I think Kim probably has a better overview of what the management actions and strategies could be than I do at this point.
And let me just take it a little bit further. A concern would be that, you know, we, I suspect entities in that area are developing plans and are going to solve the issue as it affects them. We step in and begin to mandate things and say, "You can't use that well because it has high TDS." Well, the first response is, "Well, we've been using it for 25 years and we blend it." And so I'm concerned with the ramifications of this policy.
Director Borchardt, one of the things that I think really informed this change in thinking was, in addition to the comments, was preliminary modeling that's being done in the East Los Poses basin by Cuyahoga or for Cuyahoga Municipal Water District and some particle tracking of impacted water moving away from the Arroyo. And one of the things that it really showed is that potential for the location of pumping to aggravate the migration or accelerate, accelerate the migration of the high TDS water. So pumping does appear to actually affect the movement and the, if all pumping stopped, would they continue to load up with TDS as long as the water was coming in through, from SEMI into the Arroyo Los Poses? The answer is yes. But pumping can move that contaminated water around, and so that was another thing that really informed it. So there is a connection to pumping and migration. And so I did want to bring that up because that was something that we discussed quite a lot internally with the consultant.
Well, and a couple of things that Jill said that I might have got buried in the message, but thinking that you only have control over pumping, the old GMA way, the GSA way, you have the ability to incentivize projects and you have the ability to do projects. So between those three things, there's a, that's a fairly rich toolbag you'll have to address the spread or the problems associated with water quality if you choose to do so.
Thank you.
So, looking now, moving west into the West Los Poses management area, we're back, actually, to talk about exactly what we just spoke about, which is that there are wells currently in that management area that exceed the Regional Board Basin Plan water quality objectives for TDS and sulfate in this area. So again, we've got this Zone 1, which we saw on the previous slide, and now we've got Zone 5 for the Los Poses Valley Basin. These two zones are separated by a yellow line that comes right through here in the basin. This red line is the Somas Fault trace, more or less. I shouldn't say trace, it's the subsurface area of the Somas Fault. And so the concern here is if we adopt the basin plan water quality objectives, we already have wells that exceed them in Zone 5. And again, this is TDS, and we've got wells particularly here between, on the border with the Oxnard Basin to the west, that have concentrations that exceed basin plan objectives. So you'll see, here are those same constituents, here's the concentration water quality objectives for Zone 1, this is the concentration objectives for Zone 5 in the West Los Poses management area, and here they are at the bottom for the Oxnard Basin. The reason I highlighted that yellow line between Zones 1 and 5 is that that doesn't actually correspond to any physical feature in our hydrogeologic conceptual model. And so I think what's going on here is that the basin plan objectives for Zone 5 don't match well with the current hydrogeologic understanding that this room collectively has developed. You know, the United Model right now is modeling the West Los Poses, Oxnard, and Pleasant Valley basins and the interchange of water between those three basins. We know that there's water flow across that boundary. And so in order to adopt concentration minimum thresholds for this part of the Los Poses Valley Basin, I think you'd have to instead look to the Oxnard Basin and look at those thresholds because that's part of the water flow in this area. And so the Oxnard concentrations are significantly higher, at least for TDS and sulfate, than they are in that Zone 5. So the revised approach for the West Los Poses management area would be to adopt the Oxnard water quality management objectives based on our understanding of the hydrogeologic flow, movement of water in this area, and apply those to the West Los Poses management area. These wells, I think there is one well that has been known for a while to have some problems with the seal that probably needs to be addressed separately, and that has a higher concentration than, of TDS than what we find here. So the Oxnard one is 1,200, there's one well that's at 1,900. Most of these are fairly close to that 1,200 level concentration. So the approach here would be to use regulatory thresholds, but apply the regulatory thresholds from the Oxnard Basin because of the movement of water across that boundary. And the last concern that we're going to talk about today is groundwater flow from East Los Poses into Pleasant Valley. Again, I said at the beginning that this used to be surface water flow, discharges of wastewater treatment plant, and primarily wastewater treatment plant discharges have decreased through time. And so the surface flow, the summertime surface flow doesn't make it into Pleasant Valley anymore. There's still certainly storm flow that makes it. But what you do still have happening is you do still have flow across the boundary in the subsurface. So you've got flow from, groundwater flow now from East Los Poses into Pleasant Valley. And we've seen that there are concentration concerns in East Los Poses that are moving into Pleasant Valley. The concentrations in Pleasant Valley, again, this is just one, one well that I've selected for simplicity of graphics display. But in this well, we've seen concentrations leveling out recently. And the approach here, there was certainly stakeholder feedback on this, and we are certainly open to further discussion on this. But the approach here is still to use the preliminary draft approach based on the idea that the water quality concerned would be addressed in the upstream basin, in the Los Poses Valley Basin, rather than addressing it downstream in the Pleasant Valley Basin. So the summary of this, again, I want to come back to this concept of adaptive management. I think we're all seeing it in action through this process where, and this is, this is a diagram from one of the early DWR guidances, you know, we're evaluating and learning as we go, they anticipate that that'll happen, we're getting feedback and we're adjusting, and we're planning, and eventually we will be doing as well. And so these feedback loops will continue to happen, we'll continue to monitor and evaluate these things. But the summary of the rec, staff recommendations for water quality for today is to adopt the preliminary draft approach for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley Basin water quality concerns, but in fact, to revise the approach for the Los Poses Valley Basin. That's what I've got.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions from the board? Let me open up questions or comments from the public.
Good afternoon, Chair West, Directors of the Board. My name is Michaela Brown. I'm the Director of Water and Sanitation for the County of Ventura Public Works Agency. In this capacity, oversee the operations of Water Works District 1 on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors. And specifically to Director Borchardt's comments, how can the Fox Canyon GMA help in this process? That's part of what I'm hoping to be able to provide to you. So Water Works District 1 provides water and sanitary services to the city of Moore Park and the surrounding unincorporated area. Nearly 10 years ago, a desalter project was planned and added to the district's capital improvement program. Its purpose was to treat water, treat and improve water from a shallow brackish water aquifer located near a wastewater treatment plant just off of Arroyo Los Poses. In turn, reducing the district's reliance on state water and reducing the district's water supply costs. Due to Proposition 218 and recent court cases impacting many water agencies, District 1 was required to restructure the water rates about two years ago, resulting in a significant spike in prices specifically to the district's agricultural customers. Price stabilization has become an ever-increasing important issue for agricultural customers, especially those in that area that rely solely on Water Works District 1 water and don't have their own wells. However, your board today is concerned about the sustainability of the Fox Canyon Basin, and so are we. But we feel it's important to take into consideration not just quantity, but the water quality. And I was very glad to hear the recent update that added groundwater quality objectives to the plan. And Jill could not have introduced this any better than, I honestly, I did not pay her to say that, you know, one of the ways to potentially improve it is through actual desalination. The Moore Park Desalter Project pumps and treats water from the shallow brackish water aquifer, improving the stormwater recharge rate in the area. Currently, the project cost is $38 million, and the district has spent nearly $3 million to date for planning, groundwater modeling, as well as preliminary design and pre-design. In the last two years since I've been the Director, I have met with local stakeholders to determine additional regional benefits that could result from this project. This has resulted in a reduction from the original scope and the addition of a stormwater capture mitigation project. In total, we believe that this project can remove up to 9 million pounds of, a year of salts from the basin, and this would be a significant step towards meeting groundwater quality objectives. I have heard concerns, as I've discussed this with some stakeholders, that adding a water quality objectives to the groundwater sustainability plan might require a reduction or even halting of some pumping. But we believe that the reduction will likely not reduce the continued expansion and migration of the salt plume. But desalter projects, such as the one we're planning in Moore Park, which actively take the salts out of the groundwater basin, will be a critical part of reversing the damage. In closing, we really appreciate the support of your staff and look forward to working with you and other stakeholders in the basin. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Ian?
Chair West, members of the board, my name is Ian Pritchard for Camarosa Water District. Today, I'm representing stakeholders implementing TMDLs on the Cuyahoga Creek watershed. Our general concern with the water quality section is that the characterization in place is that there's a direct relationship between surface water quality and groundwater quality. Makes it seem that there's a direct correlation between basin plan objectives and TMDLs. And there may be direct correlation in some places like the Forbay, but that's not true across, especially the Cuyahoga Creek watershed. And while TMDL stakeholders in the Cuyahoga Creek are taking a holistic approach to managing salts in the Cuyahoga Creek watershed that considers the interaction of surface water and groundwater, ultimately, TMDL requirements are for surface water quality only. And the relationship between TMDL actions and groundwater quality is a lot more nuanced than is presented in the staff report. So TMDLs exist as a mechanism of compliance for the basin plan objectives, and adopting water quality objectives wholesale without incorporating or contemplating the nuance of those programs' actions and goals doesn't really line up with the ongoing state sanctioned and EPA required framework for protecting groundwater quality. If your board recalls, the stakeholders sent a letter last November urging coordination on the water quality sections of the plan and asking the GSP not develop parallel or alternative frameworks that could introduce conflict with existing water quality programs, in particular, the salt nutrient management plan. That letter provided language that could have been incorporated into the GSP that essentially states that the GSP is focusing on existing water quality as an aspect of groundwater extraction management rather than on how it relates to groundwater objectives. And it reiterates that water quality characterization and, to Director Borchardt's point, project formulation are, continue to be subject to separate jurisdiction by the Regional Board and other existing regulatory frameworks. So a concrete example, on page 8 of the staff report, the second to last paragraph, the last two sentences, "Groundwater production can influence the migration of poor quality groundwater away from Arroyo Los Poses if groundwater elevations adjacent to the pumping centers are lower than groundwater elevations adjacent to Arroyo Los Poses. However, even if all groundwater production were to cease in the Pleasant Valley Basin, the poor quality groundwater would continue to spread because the concentration gradient would still exist." There's a similar characterization of contaminant spreading on page 5 with regard to the East Los Poses management area. And I'm not a hydrogeologist, but I have friends who are. As far as I understand, this idea of a concentration gradient or contaminant spreading is called diffusion, and while it's been observed, it's generally insignificant and ignored. So contaminants move with water as the water spreads, right? It's seawater intrusion, not sea salt intrusion. And drawing the conclusion on page 9 of the staff report, that the reduction or modification in groundwater production in the northern Pleasant Valley Basin would not prevent the continued spread of the poor quality water, that has implications on projects that are in development to address, in part, salts TMDL on the Cuyahoga Creek watershed. As Ms. Wannberger pointed out, like, there's a lot to grapple with under Sigma, right? And it's a lot, especially for groundwater management, like, this is, this is a new aspect of it. But the good news is that the state does provide guidance for how to coordinate these various regulatory programs. The staff report on the updated recycled water policy that came out a few months ago spends seven pages talking about the nexus of the salt nutrient management plan and Sigma, much of which would be applicable in this case. This might not have been available, the staff's or DUDEX thinking while developing their approach outlined in the staff report, because it was propagated through the recycled water- approach outlined in the staff report, because it was propagated through the recycled water policy channels and addresses coordination kind of more broadly. I mean, and honestly, it's a Herculean task to stay on top of all the water-related regulations that California conjures up. But luckily, the stakeholders have been doing this for a long time. We have a pretty robust set of programs, and as we mentioned in our November letter, we're more than willing to participate in the development of water quality sections, the goals and thresholds, numerical, aspirational. And in fact, we have a vested interest in participating. We spend a couple million dollars a year implementing programs to comply with TMDL regulations in the Cuyahoga Creek watershed, and that's on top of all the work that POTWs do and the various projects that agencies in the watershed are developing and have planned. So, on behalf of the stakeholders, I'm asking that you all consider holding off on incorporating this approach represented in the staff report until staff have the opportunity to work with the TMDL group and the salt nutrient management plan group to see how that state guidance that I mentioned could help us better align. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Further questions or comments from the board? The board memo indicates this is to provide policy direction. Personally, I would like to see some of the measurable objectives that are posed in the board memo run through TAG and evaluated to see how they, what their practical implications are on pumping, what the practical implications are from a sustainability standpoint by adopting these, are we implicitly adopting anybody's project lists? And how does this comport with the existing, you know, salt nutrient management plans that are out there? I think that's an analysis that TAG could do, and we could be more fully informed on whether these levels, you know, are appropriate, or what level of potential problems these levels implicate if we were to adopt them. That would be my only suggestion.
I've been thinking about this since I received the package, and fellow directors, I think you understand where my mind was going in some of my comments, but again, I'm thinking of users in the East Las Poses basin who have been utilizing what many would recall poorer groundwater quality for a long time. And yes, we have a new toolkit now. Director Pratt has indicated we can incentivize projects, we can encourage operational changes. Operational changes, some of these mutuals are not really simple to accomplish, just kind of very quickly. Wells are drilled at $900 to $1 million apiece, and these are big infrastructure investments. It's probably more likely that entities like that would choose to do some desalting, and in fact, many of them are. They're thinking about that already, and how to tie that into their rate plans and whatnot. And that kind of ties into what we've done a lot here in terms of when the local people, when the stakeholders are willing to kind of solve their own problems, we've kind of tried not to wade too far into it and tie their hands or disincentivize actions that might put us in the direction we all want to go. Groundwater quality is seriously important for agriculture in so many respects, particularly the chlorides and the TDS. And so those moves are being made by many agriculturalists, even individually on individual farms currently. I'm just concerned that, sure, we might be able to incentivize an area to say, hey, move the pumping from this area to another area, and we'll send some money your way, but I think there's going to be a lot of competition for any funds we might have. And we're going to be hard-pressed to prioritize some of those important issues. It seems to me our first issue in my own mind is seawater intrusion, but I would want us to wade very carefully into these, locking ourselves into some objectives that, you know, maybe have some unforeseen consequences down the road. That'd be my comments.
I too, as I read through this, had particular concerns with what I was reading on the East Las Poses basin, knowing what the conditions are that are out there. In particular, the one that I saw that while we are trying to grapple with and understand and take care of sustainable yield, I can see where the issue may arise, that the priorities would change. And that where we start chasing a water quality objective, and as has already been mentioned today, about the possibility of relocating pumping, or as I've seen multiple well permits come through the Elkhug, a comment made that existing water quality coming from the well does not meet basin quality objectives, and that being a basis for a well permit to not be issued in the future. Not to mention projects such as like the Moore Park Desalter, while I will agree does remove salt, where this plume is moved to is far beyond where your shallow wells will be able to grab it. And if I understand your project, and I invite you to correct me if I'm wrong, the amount of storm water that would be going back in to recharge would be an amount of water that you would want credit for to pull back out. So it ends up being a zero-sum gain to the basin, and why we don't see it as a water supply project. So we're not actually creating any new water to infiltrate the basin in order to dilute the salts that are already out into the basin. And so I see a long-term problem that does not have a ready solution because of the gradient. As what has been mentioned, you could shut off all the pumping in that basin for decades before the hydraulic gradient would reverse, and now the water table is higher than anything in the stream to start moving those salts back out. So I have many concerns that I would love TAG's input as to what is the feasibility or practical implications of adopting these standards for basin objectives, particularly in that area.
Stephen, any comments?
First question, and that is, I'd like to have staff, what are the implications of not taking action and sending this to TAG? What are the implications in terms of our schedule?
In terms of the schedule, I'm not ready to answer that question today. I should say, and you haven't asked, but, you know, that separating water the way Ian suggests is false. I mean, all the water's interrelated, intertwined. What they're trying to do is give your board as many options as possible and let you exercise them as policy. So just as an overarching, taking it to TAG, certainly, this is going to be pushing them into the policy arena, something that your board has not, unless you specifically tell them you want technical input on things such as Director Raniau, you know, is that really going to happen the way you're describing it? So be careful if you put it there, just make sure that they're focused on the technical issues, not the policy issues. And so, I'm sorry, I can't give you a schedule, but thanks for allowing me to speak on that.
So, do you think it is possible, do you think that there are sufficient technical questions about this that TAG could wrestle with?
Not in my mind, but it sounds like in your board's mind, and I'm close to this and have been hearing about it for years, so it, and it's relatively new to you. You know, there are answers to all of Director Raniau's questions that have been presented, but it'd certainly be wise to truth them through TAG so you don't have to listen to the executive officer.
And you don't see an immediate red flag saying, if this, if we take a month or two months for this to go to TAG, this is going to cause a significant problem? You're not...
Not if we take a month or two months, that's for sure.
Right, okay. That would be my issue. We've had a tendency for TAG to unveil one thing, and then another thing, another thing, and, you know, we go and go and go. And I think we all know, we're never going to have all of the information. So the one request I would have is, if it's going to do this, let's go, be focused, what are the technical things that we need TAG to do, you know, technically and direct TAG that we've consistently said, we don't want them to be setting policy, we want them to be doing exactly what you said. What are the unintended consequences of this, or is there something that we need to know technically about this? And then give it a two-month timeframe and say, we have to have it back, and, you know, whatever TAG is going to do, it'll do that. So that'd be my input for...
Yeah, my two questions, you know, what are the practical implications and what are the potential unintended consequences? And then we can weigh that as we establish the policies and the levels.
Sure. If I could add another important question... Couple of two-month timeframe?
Sure.
Yeah, great. And if I could add, if we're going to go that direction, another important question is, do these water quality issues that have been raised rise to the level of if we don't deal with them as was previously thought about in the preliminary draft, do we find ourselves unsustainable? It seems that we haven't really answered that question about, you know, what's unreasonable and unsustainable about these. In many cases, pumpers in those areas are already dealing with the issue of the quality by blending by other sources. I just might add forward it, but one idea is, why do we have to make this move to this new idea of somehow aligning with the Regional Board criteria? If there's unknowns and things of that nature, we are adaptively managing this thing. If in fact, we find that a particular area's groundwater quality needs to be dealt with in a new way, could it not be addressed in that five-year update? In other words, why would we lock ourselves into a bunch of unknowns and then spend a couple of months with TAG going through this thing when we could address it when we have more information down the road?
You know, I don't know if we can, and I don't want to, as I understand the approach, and I think it's a sound one, that if, you know, where it's determined that pumping doesn't affect a particular water quality issue, we can defer it. But the converse then is also true, where there is a correlation between pumping and groundwater qual, degradation of groundwater quality, then SIGMA requires that the plan does address it. Now, how we address it, whether these levels or something else are appropriate, I don't know, but I think that's why we're addressing it, and is that a fair summary?
Well, I agree with that summary, but then, you know, that seems to be the number one question if we're going to have TAG do this, answer that question. Are we unsustainable if we don't address these issues? Because that seems to be the primary question we haven't answered yet. We're kind of going off stakeholder comments, and that's an important part of this process, but just the fact that we receive comments doesn't necessarily mean we have to go that Just thoughts, trying to move this thing down the road.
Anything further? So I think the consensus is to give those limited issues to TAG with a limited timeline and bring back the results.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please. All right, let's move on then to item number four, proposed water supply and infrastructure projects.
Oh.
With the costs.
Well, maybe you can address those in the public comment.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board. For the record, Kim Loeb again. So as you know, GSPs must include management actions and projects to address or to achieve the sustainability goals for the basin, and will be using numerical flow models for forecasting the sustainable yield of the basins. And selected projects that affect the sustainable yield within the flow models need to be, well, they need to be selected for the future model forecasting of the sustainable yield. And your board tasked your operations committee to develop a process and, for selecting the projects, for reviewing and selecting them, and the operations committee has done that. It should be pointed out that inclusion of a project or selection for inclusion in the groundwater flow modeling is not a commitment to fund the project or a commitment to implementation. It's just the best look at the projects that we know of now that have enough information to be modeled in a future update. If there are changed situations, then the project mix could look different. And viable projects that were not selected for the modeling will include those in the GSP as projects that could help the basin, but they may not be directly affect the modeling output. So that's what this purpose of this process was and is. So the GSP emergency regulations has sort of a checklist feasibility list, and any projects that are relied on to achieve the sustainable yield of the basin have to meet this list of criteria. The operations committee held a series of seven meetings over February through August of 2018, and these meetings were well-attended by stakeholders. And the committee actively engaged stakeholders in the process and discussion. They were very good meetings. And the committee, working with staff and stakeholders, developed criteria for project evaluation and a checklist for inclusion in the GSP modeling, and they required six, or there were six criteria. Sufficient project information is available for the evaluation and modeling of the project. The project increases the sustainable yield or reduces the groundwater demand. It can be implemented within 20-year period that we have to achieve sustainability. It meets the GSP emergency regulations project criteria. There's an agency proponent for the project was desired, and the funding for the project is identified. So 19 projects were submitted in response to a solicitation. The Ops Committee conducted an initial review and asked the TAG to do a technical review of the net sustainable yield that it appeared the projects would provide. TAG formed an ad hoc subcommittee that worked, held a couple meetings with staff and went through the projects in detail, came back to the full TAG, and then forwarded those findings to the operations committee, which conducted a full review on, at three meetings of the projects. So in your packet, there is a table that lists the selected projects in Table One and the projects that were not selected without prejudice, they just did not meet those criteria for inclusion in the modeling in the Table Two. This is a close-up of that Table One, and the projects that came through the selection process in the Las Poses basin are the purchase of imported water from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District for inland deliveries, Arroyo Las Poses, Arundo removal, and purchase of water to assure continued flows in the Arroyo Las Poses. In the Oxnard sub-basin, they're broken into great-related projects and other projects. Now, the great-related projects, there were, these are not necessarily additive, there's a limited amount of water available, and so that's why they were put this way. I should state that the, on that table, the white is, as was submitted by the project proponent, the blue or gray there are potential policy or identification of the type of project, and then the yellow are staff and TAG analysis and comments. So there were three great-related projects, two city of Oxnard, and then one that's a combination city of Oxnard and United Water that would take the project, Great Water for recharge. And I've been informed by United, there was an error in their submission in terms of the project costs, but again, really what we're looking at is, will it increase the sustainable yield at this point? So I think they're going to talk to that at the public comment stage. So I think they're going to talk to that at the public comment stage. Then the other projects that were proposed or made through the selection process for the Oxnard Basin is the Freeman Dam Expansion Project and Temporary Agricultural Land Fallowing. The only project for the Pleasant Valley Basin was the Temporary Agricultural Land Fallowing Project. During the process of reviewing these projects, several policy issues were identified, which were brought to the Ops Committee and for discussion, and their guidance to your board on how we should address these. So first is the issue of replenishment fee. Many of the projects proposed rely on a potential future GMA replenishment fee, and the GSP regulations will-
Excuse me, Kim?
Yeah?
Could I interrupt you? Lay out for me how those replenishment fees will be calculated, or how they're thought to be, or proposed to be configured? Is it a per acre-foot cost, or is it a per user cost?
That, I'll answer that, but nothing, we have done nothing on that. That will all be policy decisions made by your board. All we've done is sort of thought about the-
A loose number.
Yeah, loose number, and then how would it be applied? But there's been, you know, there's many, many conversations out in the stakeholder community, should it be specially applied to areas, should there be a base fee, should it be acre-foot, should it be other things? But none of that, those are all policy decisions for your board to make.
Fine.
I will clarify that for the purpose of trying to estimate some of the scalable projects, we did talk about what potential replenishment fees might be, and just to try and get our hands around what the appropriate level of project would be for the modeling, so we'll talk about that in a minute. Hmm? Well, we do have some of the discussion that was had at the operations committee that we'll talk about here in a moment. And again, it is all projected just for the purpose of trying to get arms around how are we going to conduct the modeling, recognizing it could look completely different when it's implemented, but it's our best understanding moving forward. And again, this is what we want to have your board's input to say, yeah, this seems reasonable for presumptions for sustainable yield modeling, recognizing that in implementation it could look different. All right, so the next policy issue is several of the projects propose short and long-term purchase of pumping allocation for the purpose of reducing groundwater pumping. Those include purchase of imported water for in-lu deliveries to pumpers and temporary land following. And then lastly, there was a project proposed to purchase, enter an agreement to purchase wastewater effluent coming from Simi Valley to assure its continued flow into the East Los Poses Management Area. Those flows are a significant source of recharge into the basin, however, they have significant water quality issues associated with them, as we know. So we'll talk about these a little bit more as we move forward. So the guidance the operations committee gave regarding replenishment fee is that the projects should be included in the modeling if they meet all other requirements. Was reiterated multiple times, inclusion of a project in the GSP is not a commitment to future funding because that, we can't really get into that selection process until we have the GSP, and that'll be on a whole separate track, and the projects could be eliminated if future replenishment fee is not enacted or the project's not selected. In discussions, just for the purpose of trying to scope out some of these scalable projects like purchase of imported water or following, there was discussion at the operations committee of what inappropriate level of replenishment fee might be, and in discussion, it was discussed was $100 to $200 an acre-foot for the Los Poses Valley Basin and $200 to $400 for the Oxnard Sub Basin, the Pleasant Valley Basin. And there's a table in the staff report that was presented to the, was included in the Ops Committee discussions, based on pumping, what would be the amount of fees that would be generated at various replenishment fee levels? And then, Table 4 in the packet, again, this is one that was reviewed at the operations committee, then looked at those scalable projects, and what might be an order of magnitude, appropriate amount of funding that might be implemented in the future, and what would that result in terms of acre-feet of water that we could then plug into model input for modeling the sustainable yield? And so that shows that. One of the things that's important to recognize, even with all the projects proposed, it's not a huge amount of water. Some of the, ultimately, there'll have to be a lot more feasibility analysis of future projects with, once the modeling's completed post-GSP, but again, these are the projects that have enough information, are far enough along with their feasibility, that they will meet the test to be included for estimates of future sustainable yield. In terms of allocation purchases, your operations committee suggested that the projects include, that the modeling, GSP include allocation purchases, short or long-term, in strategic areas such as the seawater intrusion area to reduce the demand or increase the basin's sustainable yield. In estimating purchases of imported water, it should be the net cost, less any pumping costs or replenishment fees that otherwise would be incurred. And then there was recognition that if a temporary land fowling program were actually implemented in the future, there would be many follow-on policy issues that would have to be addressed, such as low-water use cover crop for dust control, what could be the economic impacts, but these don't need to be resolved for the GSP future sustainable yield modeling, but they wanted to make sure that it was understood that there were a lot of policy issues that would have to be looked at should that come to fruition. And then lastly, in terms of the Los Poses, Royal Los Poses water purchase, the committee and stakeholders expressed a lot of concern about the water quality, but recognized the recharge benefit. The operations committee advised that the project should be included in the groundwater modeling, but recognizing the water quality issue would have to be addressed if the project was actually implemented. Also, recognize that estimating the cost for that's a challenge because there's been absolutely no discussion. This is a third-party suggestion, and there's been no discussion between the agency and the city about the possibility of that. So that concludes my presentation. At this point, staff requests your board provide recommendations regarding these policy issues, and we request that you approve the operations committee proposed selection of the projects for inclusion in the GSP groundwater modeling.
Thank you. First, as notwithstanding where this discussion might go and how these recommendations may or may not change, I want to thank the operations committee for the huge amount of work. Director Bennett, Director Ranio spent a lot of time, along with staff and members of the stakeholder committees, putting this together, did an impressive body of work, and we really appreciate the effort. I haven't seen a staff report so, or a committee report so complete ever, so thank you so much. With that having said, any other questions or comments from the board before we open it to the public?
I just want to make one comment. Staff really knocked down the park so that we could have good committee meetings. The other thing I'd point out, we had seven committee meetings, but we had an average of 25 people at each of those meetings, so we had, and it was very thoughtful and helpful input as we went forward. So this is one of those good efforts that had lots of stakeholder input and all that other stuff, and I appreciate particularly staff behind the scenes setting the ball up each time and going back and working on the problems that we had and stuff. Appreciate it working with Director Ranio, thank you.
Anything? David? Sure. Thank you, Kim. Questions or comments from the public with respect to this item?
Hi, I'm Bob Seemack with United Water, I'm the Assistant General Manager. Just one correction on the list of projects, the Freeman diversion project, we made a, I guess, a good mathematical error, and the prices, if you can show Table 4, is that, oh, I control it? What we did is, when we took the capital costs, we divided by the yield, but we forgot to divide by the number of years that project would be active, so in essence, no, 4. Let's see, there we go. So the, under the Oxnard classification, the Freeman diversion project isn't 4,200, it's actually closer to $200 if you took capital and own it, so it's a fairly attractive project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jurgen Gramco, I just wanted to make the point that all of these projects have to be looked at on the fundamental measure of comparison to fallowing. So the economics of fallowing would be what rental income would be divided by the amount of allocation a piece of property has. So if you have a piece of property that's getting $3,000 a year in rent, has a two-acre-foot allocation, if you follow it, that makes the water worth $1,500 an acre-foot. So that's the most feasible, readily available source of water is to follow land, and, you know, in my view, that is the most likely way this is going to go. Thank you for that change to the United Water cost, but up until that change, just about everything on the board is in excess of the $1,500 an acre-foot, so they're not economically feasible in comparison to fallowing. So fallowing is going to be the most likely result. So when you get into fallowing, I think you get into sequo, too, because at that point, now we're taking out prime farmland, and I think that ends up creating a sequel problem, too. Thank you.
Could I just ask you a question real quick here? Does fallowing have to take prime farmland out of operation permanently, or can it be temporary?
I think these sustainability plans are permanent, and therefore, to meet the plan, you're going to have to take the land out permanently.
Wouldn't there be variations in terms of, because of weather patterns, rain patterns, cropping patterns, et cetera, different levels of, you know, different levels of agricultural production that could take place and that would require different levels, different amounts of land to be followed? I mean, if we have great rainfall and people develop a different kind of crop, you might have to follow much less land with the same amount of water being pumped?
I think all of those parameters would be part of the analysis, but I think the reality is, we're going to have a hard and fast number in terms of the sustainable yield. Adaptive management is likely to adjust it up or down a little bit, but from all of the preliminary analysis, it sounds to me like we're going to be cut, at least on the Oxnard Plain, something on the order of 30 or 40 percent. That is a whole bunch of water, so I don't see any way that we can solve that without permanent fallowing. We may be at a question of how much, whether it's in fact 30 percent of the acreage, because in order to keep the current diversity of crop, then, yeah, then it would be a direct relationship, and you'd have to follow 30 percent of the acres. If you said, well, what if you go to lower-water-using crops? I'm not sure that the economics for lower-water-using crops would be sustainable on that side of the equation, and, I mean, just look at the San Joaquin Valley and the Delta Smelt issue, and the answer there is fallowing, and I think that's what's got to happen here. There's just, there isn't an easy answer unless the Oxnard Great Water is cheaper, and we put the second skid in and the third skid in and get going on that right away. But short of that, we're looking at fallowing, seriously.
Thank you. I may agree that there's some fallowing, I think I disagree that we necessarily are committed to 30 or 40 percent fallowing on a permanent basis, but that remains to be seen, all right?
Anything further? Please.
Hi, I'm John Lindquist, Senior Hydrogeologist with United Water Conservation District. And just to follow up with Jurgen's question, or comment, sorry, United had several proposed projects that didn't make this first cut that could potentially add 30,000 additional acre-feet of water, in other words, make up that 30 percent loss that we're talking about, or more. And some of those projects, I mean, the prices are still preliminary, they were early in the design process, but we were thinking that they would come in at well under $1,500 an acre-foot, some of them, like the project that Bob talked about, the Freeman Expansion, in the range of a few hundred dollars per acre-foot. So it will be a challenge, though, I see Jurgen's point, it'll be a challenge on, for you, to figure out how to incorporate those projects or not incorporate them in this preliminary GSP, since it doesn't look like they're going to get modeled in this first cut. You have to figure out how we can implement, how we can incorporate these future projects that would meet that need without fallowing in a five-year update, I'm not sure how you handle it. Thank you.
Excuse me, which projects didn't make the cut?
Turn to Table 2.
The big ones are Brackish Water, ASAP Project, I can't think of all of them offhand, I don't think Anacapwic is on that list, but ASAP, the Alternative Supply Alliance Pipeline, I always forget what that acronym means, but there are projects. And there is another project, potential project, that OPV Ag Group has talked with us about in the past, and that's this concept of moving water via pipeline from farther back away from the ocean and from the upper aquifer system towards the coast, and it's a project because it involves pipelines and whatnot, but our GSP light analysis ultimately concluded that that could bring another 5,000 to 10,000 acre-feet of water per year. That doesn't involve a D-SAL plant or anything like that, it's pipelines and perhaps a new well, so a modestly cost project that hasn't even been, hasn't even made the list yet, that could be 5,000 to 10,000 acre-feet per year. So there are other options, the challenge is how do you incorporate that in this first GSP that you're proposing, since these projects aren't making this initial list, and does that cut off the future for us? I don't know.
The short answer is we incorporate them just the way Kim described, we identify the projects that are advanced enough to model, and we include others for future reference, and I don't think it cuts off anything with respect to future development. If the GSP was published, you know, tomorrow and Monday, you showed up with a project with 30,000 acre-feet of water that was $200 or $300 an acre-foot, something tells me we'd figure out a way to get that funded, but until that happens, I wouldn't worry too much about it.
We certainly wouldn't wait 20 years before we change the allocation system.
Okay, thank you. Because we want to, we want to build those projects if the region decides they want them.
Thank you. Anyone else? The recommended action here is to, I guess, provide direction to staff and to approve the operations committee's proposed selection of process for inclusion in the GSP groundwater modeling. Is there a motion to do so?
Director West, just for the benefit of being very clear, staff has on Page 3 and on Page 4 offered the operations committee, under the terms, operations committee guidance, if you'll see that at the top of Page 3, and that, those, that is the guidance on the policy questions that the operations committee is offering. So not only are we suggesting 1 and 3 are receive and file and approve the committee's proposed selection, but provide direction regarding policy issues, I would suggest that my motion would be to adopt the policy recommendations of the operations committee if everybody's comfortable with that. We eventually reached agreement, Director Ranio and I on that. So that would be my motion, I just want to be clear, my motion includes that direction, and if somebody has some other thoughts, certainly- direction, and if somebody has some other thoughts, certainly have to.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion before we call for the vote? Keely?
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on next to...
Could I just ask one thing? It doesn't have anything to do with the item. It's just that in the future, when things are sent to us that are so small, it's hard to read, even with reading glasses, and that talks about different things and different colors, which means something, could you please send us a large copy instead of the 50 percent that was in the packet?
Yes, Director Craven, we'll be sure to do that in the future. Apologize for that.
I had a lot of trouble getting through this and figuring out what was moved.
And I am sorry, there's one, there's one thing that I wish I should have said. On page three, if we could look at it, it says, "Projects that rely on replenishment fee should be included if they meet all other requirements. However, these projects," it says, "could be eliminated if the future replenishment fee is not enacted." And I think that we at the operations committee said they would be eliminated. In other words, if we don't pass a replenishment fee. So, I would like to ask that we make that, that one change, if everybody's comfortable with that, that would say they would be eliminated without a replenishment fee. So, the word could becomes would. Kim, second line of operation guidance on page three. Thank you.
Any objection to that change?
Great, thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to item number five.
Good afternoon again, Chair West, members of the board, Kim Loeb, KMA staff for the record. This item is a continued discussion on development of new pumping allocation system for the Oxnard Pleasant Valley basins. Your board spent a good, long day on July 25th with a workshop in the morning to discuss really four main issues, which are, should the allocation system be land-based or wellhead-based? What should the base period or starting allocation be? What should the ramp-down methodology to the ending allocation, sustainable yield be? And what should be the method for inclusion of surface water? And then, that afternoon, your board held a, its regular meeting and provided some direction and comments to staff. And those were that the allocation system should include surface water, especially the Santa Clara River water, that we should explore moving from a wellhead base to a land-based allocation system in the future, once technical and administrative hurdles have been resolved. The ramp-down to sustainable yield should use some kind of hybrid system and/or a minimum allocation to protect low-water users. The allocation should have a flexibility using an accrual of unused allocation with some kind of cap, but not allow for borrowing. And you asked staff to do an analysis of a 2010 to 2014 base period with a hybrid ramp-down. And before we get into that, it would be important to discuss the challenge of...
Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
I just want to catch that. Got it, thank you.
Combination codes, as you know, are groupings of wells combined for the purpose of allocation reporting. They've been implemented for a long time. They've become even maybe more important during the IEI period since ordinance E. And we need to talk about them because that is the basis on which we would move to, that's proposed, we would move to land-based allocation. So, as you know, extraction statements are provided semi-annually by pumpers that tell us exactly, they report how much in acre feet they have actually extracted at each well. But the IEI applications provide, submitted annually by agriculture pumpers, combine all the operations into a combination code. There's no specific water use information, other than at the COM code level. It's the most granular level that we have. There's no information about individual parcels or wells, other than the extractions, on the extraction statements. And a COM code may comprise many wells and land parcels with different owners. They might be non-contiguous and spread across basins, and they're dynamic. The operators add wells and parcels each year, so they, they are changing. This pie chart was, is in your packet, and what that's showing is the changes between 2015 and 2016 reporting, and then 2016 to 2017. And the dark blue is showing that there was no change in irrigated acreage. So, that's the unchanged. The yellow shows that there was no IEI submitted for that COM code between those years. So, it could be that the COM code changed, or was eliminated, or was combined into another one. The green shows the percent of COM codes where the acreage decreased in terms of the irrigated acreage. And the orange showed COM codes where the acreage reported increased. So, next, I'm going to show an example of some COM codes. These are actual COM codes. And what we're looking at here is, this is the Oxnard Basin, Las Poses Basin, Pleasant Valley, Rosa and Rosa, and the tan objects, those are APNs, parcels, and then the circles are wells. So, in this example, you'll see that it's got a number of parcels spread out in different places of the Oxnard Basin. Here's a well that's part of the COM code, but it doesn't have an associated reported parcel receiving water. And then there's a parcel and a well in Pleasant Valley. The next year, it looked like this. So, there was a lot less parcels reported in wells. And then in 2017, that COM code went away entirely. The next example is a large COM code. It's spread across the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins here. And, but there is also a parcel and well way out here on this end of the basin. In 2016, it looks pretty similar, but you can see there's some, a new well came in in Pleasant Valley and some parcels. And then in 2017, yet again, switching back and forth, we got more parcels that came in. This parcel down here and a well over here. Now, I've got four of these. Here's the third example. 2015, this COM code didn't exist. In 2016, it, there just was a parcel here with a couple wells, pretty straightforward. And then 2017, combined in that COM code was a parcel over here and a well, and a parcel's here with a couple wells. And then lastly, there's another COM code, a number of parcels and wells there in the southern Oxnard Basin. In 2016, pretty much the same, if I go back and forth, but some more parcels came in. And then, then in 2017, we now have, combined in that COM code, parcels in a well in Pleasant Valley. So, the point of this is to show that these things are really dynamic. Managing the COM codes is a very challenging aspect of managing the allocations, because they do change so much. They're not contiguous. And these could be different owners, too, because they're put together by operators. So, the OVP Ag owner folks proposed using the IEI and the COM codes to base for a total applied water. I think we've learned that the white paper had an error in, which said groundwater pumping, but really what they're talking about is total applied water. And they would use the COM code, irrigated acreage, to obtain average applied water per acre, although we don't know what year would be chosen, because they are quite volatile. A lot of them, not all of them, but a lot of them are. And then they would assume the average applied water is the same across all APNs in the COM code. And well and, and landowner concerns would be worked out through an agency variance process. But staff's concerned this could present significant administrative burden due to dynamically changing COM codes spread across the basins with different owners. And your board prudently articulated at the 25th meeting that we should only transition from a wellhead base to a land-based allocation system, once the technical and administrative hurdles have been resolved. What staff proposes is that we continue in a new allocation system with a fixed allocation with a wellhead-based allocation for an interim period. During that period, we require the operators and ag water purveyors to report water for all APNs that are irrigated by each well and surface water turnout, because that's the granular data that we really need to move to a land-based system that we don't have with the COM code data. The agency, in that time, would develop a new online data management system for reporting of the parcels the water's delivered to. And during, once sufficient parcel-based information is collected during that interim period, then your board could consider moving to a land-based allocation system, because the information would be collected. Any questions up to this point? All right. So, in terms of base period, we've talked about a lot of different base periods and ramp-down methodologies. Your board requested that we look at a hybrid ramp-down of the 2010 to 2014 base period. The OVP ramp-down, hybrid ramp-down, is based on an acre foot per acre. It's based on the land application of water, based on the COM codes. As we saw, that's a problematic approach. And additionally, during that base period, 2010 to 2014, we don't even have that. We have no records of what parcels or acres were irrigated. So, the lack of the ability to establish a land-based acre foot per acre relationship to the COM codes in the wells precludes using that type of hybrid approach, the OVP-type landbase, during this 2010 to 2014 ramp-down period. Staff proposes that your board could consider a wellhead-based hybrid ramp-down approach. The ramp-down would be based on the base period average, annual extraction, acre feet per acre, I mean, not per acre, acre feet per year, that's important. The proposed new reporting requirements under a new allocation system, we would propose, would include irrigated APNs. That's part of what OPV proposed as well. So, that would allow the calculation of the acre foot per acre of applied water, because that would be reported. And a hybrid system could look at a middle tier of water users, could be ramped down at just a straight proportional rate. Higher-tier water users could ramp down at an increased proportional rate, and lower water users could ramp down at a decreased proportional rate. An example, these are not necessarily suggested, you know, recommendations, but they're an example for the purpose of discussing this, is that water use over two and a half acre foot per acre, maybe that's 125 percent of the proportional ramp-down. And maybe there's a minimum of one and a half acre foot per acre, less than that land use, would be 75 percent of the proportional ramp-down. So, what would this look like? So, we're going to pretend these are wells. I'm using COM codes as a proxy, because we don't have the well-related parcel information now, but we will, moving forward, if your board moves forward with the proposed approach. And what we're looking at is extraction, acre feet per acre here. And this is not a year, these are just individual pumping. And the blue line recommends, represents the 2010 to 2014 current starting, that would be the starting allocation on, if that base period was adopted. And then, the yellow line represents what a straight proportional ending allocation after 20 years, after the ramp-down's over, might end up being. Then, using, just as an example, that those criteria that I mentioned in the other slide, this would show how that would be adjusted. Those that were over, that the max, selected max acre feet per acre application would be ramped down to a lower level. And those that were pumping less, at the minimum, would be ramped down to a lower level. So, that's how a wellhead-based hybrid system could be implemented in the future. Any questions on that? Okay. The method to account for surface water, subsequent to the workshop, staff met with representatives of the OVP Ag Group. They had shown the new method for accounting for Santa Clara River water, for water delivered to PTP and PV systems, which they called the diversions normally delivered in lieu. And the method would adjust the total basin ag allocation, surface and groundwater, based on the total basin ramp-down. And the ag allocation, the total basin ag allocation, would be trued up every five years, based on a running average of the actual Santa Clara River water delivery. First five years, it would be assumed, and then it would move forward with trued up based on what the actual running average is. This proposed method seems very promising. However, the way it was shown to us was with just hypothetical deliveries. So, we are evaluating the method under a variety of scenarios, including projecting past delivery, historical deliveries on the Santa Clara River, in order to see how this method would behave under a variety of scenarios. And we'll come back to your board at a future board meeting and report our findings on that.
How do you tie that to COM codes?
This does not tie to COM codes. This is if the, there would be a total basin ag allocation, groundwater, and then also the surface water on top of that. So, just for purposes of discussing, let's say it's 100,000 acre feet total with groundwater pumping in the two basins, and 60,000 is agricultural, then this would apply to the 60,000 plus the, the surface water. So, I think, once we come back and get into the details with the evaluation, I think it'll become clear. But the important thing, and the reason why this looks like it'll work, is rather than applying to each individual allocation, well or COM code, it applies to the overall agricultural pool allocation. And then, everybody would be adjusted up or down, based on the total available water, and how much has actually been delivered, based on what was projected on those five-year trued-up periods.
Thank you.
So, flexibility, again, your board expressed interest, and stakeholders have commented that a method for carrying over unused allocation or accrual would make sense in a new allocation system with some kind of caps constraints. But borrowing should not be included. The OVP representatives at the workshop said that if we use this new DN-DIL to deliver, I don't remember what it, I can't remember, but anyway, the proposed surface water accounting, that the borrowing would be much less critical than what they had originally thought. And we're continuing to evaluate methods for accrual flexibility. And we're continuing to evaluate methods for accrual flexibility, and what would be appropriate constraints on that, we will report back to your board at a future meeting on that as well. So in terms of conclusions and recommendations, moving to a land-based allocation system at this time's not really feasible because of the problems with the comp code data, in terms of trying to get that to the individual parcels. And staff proposes continuing or moving forward with the wellhead-based allocations under a new allocation, fixed allocation system for an interim period, in which operators would be required to report where they're delivering the water, so we can develop the data to know where that water goes to. The start should be, starting allocation should be based on average annual allocations during a base period, which we've talked about, and I think that's not controversial. The base period's controversial, but starting with a base period's not. And a wellhead-based hybrid ramp-down could be implemented with proportional reductions to take into account high water use and low water use, as we discussed. During that interim period, we could develop a new data management system that would be GIS-based and be able to track the parcels. Operators could report what parcels are irrigating, develop those data, and once those data are, there's sufficient data to analyze and provide some history of how that's being used, then your board could consider moving to a land-based allocation system. And staff is continuing to, its evaluation of that DN-DIL proposed applied water method and the methods for accrual flexibility. So that concludes my report to you.
So the direction that you're looking for from this board has to do with the appropriate base period, the appropriate ramp-down methodology, and the, I guess, flexibility approaches? Is that correct?
Well, I think the flexibility approaches, we're going to come back to your board. I think your board, unless your board has something different than the direction that you gave to include some kind of accrual flexibility with constraints and not borrowing, we have that direction now, and we, we're working to develop a, to come back with some proposals for how to do that. But you're correct about moving forward. We're looking for direction to continue with the staff's recommendation in the new allocation system, using a wellhead-based allocation, at least for an interim time, a base period, and then what the ramp-down might look like.
Well, certainly the wellhead, and I think for all the practical reasons that you mentioned, the wellhead-based allocation system is where we're going to have to start. When you consider the, the lack of information and the lack of infrastructure that exists to provide the information that would be needed, I don't think there's really much of a choice. You know, unless we've got AMI systems on every well and every turnout to every acre, forget, you're just not going to have the data at this point to develop that land-based system. I guess with, with respect to the base period, we've heard an analysis of different approaches. Same thing is true with the ramp-down methodology, and just so that it's clear, when the board asked to see what a, what I call a disproportional ramp-down or a hybrid ramp-down looks like, I don't think that was a commitment that that's anything that the board is interested in, we just wanted to see what it would look like. Because having said that, I'm not satisfied that anything other than a protanto or a, an equal proportional ramp-down complies with the law or makes any practical sense from an administrative standpoint. That's something the board needs to discuss as well. Having seen what that looks like, I'm not impressed by that approach. That's just me. Again, those are the issues, those are the issues staff wants direction on. Any questions or comments from the board before we hear more from the public?
I wonder if the board would indulge me to have Kim explain one more time the three-tiered ramp-down that they're coming, thinking about? Is that, I'm not clear on that. Yeah, right, that picture there.
So, in this picture, this, this is a hypothetical starting allocation, and again, these are comp codes as proxy for wells, because that's the data we have. And this yellow or mustard line would represent perhaps an ending allocation after a ramp-down. So there's no time component, there's only two, this is the starting, and here's 20 years later. Then the individual bars represent, if the, if it's in a middle-tier average water use, it's not super high or it's not super low, then the ending allocation would be exactly at the proportional ramp-down. But, there could be some criteria or criterion where pumping above a certain amount has an increased factor to it. Just for purposes of showing what this would look like, I used 125%. And then, low water use could be at a reduced ramp-down, and that could be, that would be represented by these bars above. This is where the proportional would be, here's where they ended up because they were lower water use. Your board also talked about the idea, similar to what is in the Los Poses Plan, of just having a minimum floor, that could be another way to handle it. But, we wanted to look, explore the idea of, were there other, just kind of brainstorm, were there other approaches where we could have other than a straight proportional endpoint or ramp-down that, that might make sense, because your board seemed to be, or at least some discussion, seemed to be concerned about high water use and then also helping to make sure that the low water users aren't ramped down to a unusable allocation.
And that's why we discussed creating a floor at some level so that low water users didn't get reduced below what it would take to operate.
Right.
Not stranding lands.
Correct, correct. But keeping the reductions proportional to that point.
How do you envision this proposed concept differing from just pure proportional reductions?
May I answer that? What we did is, once we found out we couldn't get to where your board directed us with that period, we just wanted to show that it could be done at the wellhead. And, and this is just an example of what could be done, it has no other basis than, you know, just showing that there are lots of ways, if you decide that's the way you want to go, there are lots of ways to attack the problem. So we didn't mean it as a recommendation or anything.
That, that's exactly right.
Did I offer this thought, and I want to apologize, I'll have to leave in 15 minutes, and regardless of where we are, so it's probably good for me to at least let you know what my thoughts are with this, and that is, I think overall, staff did a very good job of taking, you know, it was obviously a very contentious and challenging day for us, taking what we said, and we need more information, and so I think they've convinced me, and I think probably most of us, we're not ready to do the land-based system, all right, so they went, so, just tried to do this practical. I think the second thing is, we said, we were not ready to commit to the proportional reduction, right? We wanted to see some, some hybrid options. And staff has basically said that the hybrid option that was offered out there based on land-based is not practical, but that there is a way to do hybrid, they're not saying it has to be this, but there is a way to do hybrid. So my sense is, what we're, staff is not really asking us to change anything specific except, if, staff has, is following our direction as best, as practical, and they're coming back with our request, which is, what's practical, what can we do? And they're saying, this is where we're going, and I don't think we need to do anything except say, keep going, because we're not ruling out proportional, and I'm not ruling out proportional, but I think we should keep hybrid open. What I do think we're probably ready to say, as everybody is hearing, I think everybody would be ready to say, there is some minimum that we don't want to cut people below, whatever that is. So that would be probably something that I would, would just offer as a consensus from us. But that staff has enlightened me more now, as a result of the presentation, and we should keep going forward and let staff see if there's any other hybrid systems at work, let people react to this idea of hybrid based on well, let's, let's have people react to that. And there's a whole lot of conversation that staff's going to have to have on the accrual. And the input I would offer is, just be careful, we don't want credits to just grow too large. The accrual, in my mind, needs to have something where it gets extermin, it's, it's just for a couple of years to give you flexibility, but not to build up some account that then caused all the problems that we had before. So that's, my input is, is well-done by staff, no significant changes, work hard on the accrual side of it, keep, keep playing around with hybrids, they guarantee a minimum, so that we can compare that to proportional. I'm not ready to sign off one way or the other at this point in time, but I'm willing to give both those out there. And I haven't heard anything on base period that changes my thinking, but I could change my thinking, but I haven't heard anything on base period that changes my thinking from the recommendation that we came up with, so, that's, that's my thoughts, I don't know if other people are kind of in that ballpark, it might be helpful for the public.
Was the recommendation the 2014, 2010, 2014 that Mr. Radial thought of?
Mr. Radial thought of, yeah. I haven't heard anything since then that's changing my thinking on that, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not completely wedded to that either.
Question I have for you, Kim, as I read through the report here, has to do with recycled water. And the question that I have for it is currently under the program from Oxnard to Pleasant Valley, if I understand it correctly, is that water is delivered, and that the price for that water is reduced if there's a pump-back credit that goes back to Oxnard for water that was not pumped in Pleasant Valley.
That's correct.
Okay. So, in my way of thinking, that's a liability that's outstanding against the basin that at some point Oxnard's going to want to, want to collect upon. And it also puts it in the same pool as water delivered off the Santa Clara River, that was in lieu of pumping. So what I have not seen in here is any mention of recycled water being grouped together as part of the total water allocation when there is a pump-back credit that is issued to Oxnard.
Well, if there, if it's just a transfer of allocation, so there's pumping not, one entity is not pumping because they're getting some new water, which the Great Water is, and the other entity is pumping, that's neutral to the basin, right? Because the pumping is still happening in the basin, it's just one entity is pumping the other entity's allocation. If there was, that's another advantage to the OVP's proposed DN-DIL method, is if there was perhaps recycled water where there was no exchange of allocation, it was just new water to the basin or some other water, that could be put into that method, as well as the Santa Clara River water, so new project water, as long as it's not being produced in order to allow, as long as it's a net plus to the basin, rather than just a net exchange of pumping. Maybe I didn't explain that well?
Can I take it? Yes, you're right, you didn't see it. And, and there's a reason you didn't see it, and it's because of previous board discussion. Your board can discuss that. What Kim's trying to do is explain the previous board discussion on it. All you see in this is Santa Clara water, you don't see the other deals on Caneo Creek or with the Great Water. That's correct.
Okay.
Sure.
John Matthews, General Counsel for Pleasant Valley. I think on the, your point's a good one, that if it's neutral to the basin, what are you really doing? But, this board adopted a resolution, and I apologize, I don't remember the number, but it has very specific triggers on when that can be, in essence, redeemed by the city of Oxnard. And I think to date, we haven't reached those because we've been in a drought, so none of that, none of that's been redeemed. One of the things we looked very closely with Director Mulholland was the condition of the forbay on that. So, I think your, your point's well-taken, but I think there are some guardrails there that prevent us from having a situation where there's a, you'll run on the bank under the credit situation.
So essentially, it is water that is currently in storage?
I'm sorry?
The water that has been transferred back to Oxnard as a pump-back credit is water that is in storage?
That's one way to look at it.
Okay. Is that volume impacting whether water levels have given us a false sense of water levels are actually higher than what they should be?
That's a question I think you'd have to ask the technicians on that.
So not being a technician, I'll still take a stab at that. So, it's a credit, in the old parlance, it's a credit, and credits have different colors, and we're keeping different colored piles of credits around for your board to deal with later. So that issue's going to come up at some point. I don't believe they were included in the modeling or in the sustainable yield count, so, but we will be bringing that to your board at some point, the whole credit issue.
A water credit's flammable?
Only in here.
Any other questions or comments from the board? And questions or comments from the public on this item?
So I can get this better. Again, John Lindquist from United Water, and I wanted to briefly address a question that I've heard at several previous GMA meetings, and it relates to allocations and the discussion today. That's specifically, how much surface water does United plan to divert from the Santa Clara River in the future at Freeman diversion? And how much of that water will be delivered to ag users via the PTP and Pleasant Valley pipelines? So, between the recent drought and the threat of regulatory restrictions, all of us at United, and probably most people in this room, have had very real and justifiable reasons to be pessimistic about the future. The Freeman diversion provides the vast majority of locally sourced, sustainable water supply for people and agriculture in the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins, and it was indeed under threat. However, thanks to the support and encouragement from local stakeholders, we pressed ahead with development of a reasonable and protective habitat conservation plan, or HCP. This HCP includes the parameters that define our future diversion amounts under different river flow regimes. The HCP will be discussed at a United Board of Directors special meeting tomorrow, and we expect to submit it to the regulators in October. At the same time, working with GMA staff and their consultant, we've pressed ahead with surface water and groundwater modeling to forecast diversion and pipeline delivery rates that we expect to see in the future. And so based on those HCP scenarios in our modeling, we expect to divert a long-term average of about 61,000 acre-feet per year from Freeman diversion in the future, with about 14,000 acre-feet per year of that total going to the PTP and PV pipelines, and 47,000 acre-feet per year being recharged. The 14,000 acre-feet per year of pipeline deliveries will remain a top priority for United, so even in years when the total diversions are smaller than average, we expect to maintain pipeline deliveries of surface water at or near 14,000 acre-feet per year, except in extreme droughts. Now, these estimates are based on 1985 through 2015 climate and river conditions, as well as historic demands on the Oxnard Plain. And it's possible, likely even, that Southern California will have extended dry and wet periods in the near future, or that river flows from Santa Clarita could decrease or increase, or that local land use and water demand could change in the future. Any of those factors could change our future diversions. However, we have to plan for specific diversion quantities, and we are, 61,000 acre-feet per year with 14,000 acre-feet per year going to pipeline deliveries is the most likely scenario that we can forecast at present. So I should add that it could take five to 10 years before a region claws its way out of the recent drought and returns to normal conditions. Until then, it's going to take a lot of recharge to fill the deep hole that's been dug in our groundwater reserves during the drought. That said, the HCP, our HCP includes a proposal to actually expand the Freeman diversion in the future, which could increase recharge by another 10,000 acre-feet per year in the longer-term future. Staff at United are increasingly optimistic about this future, about the HCP being a success for both wildlife and water supply, and continuing to be a cornerstone for our region's water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I appreciate that presentation, I just want to let United know I'd like to spend more time talking with you about that. Thank you.
Over.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board, Chair West, pardon me. My name's Alden Broome, grower on the Oxnard Plain, and Director at the OPV Land Owners Group. I first want to say thank you for the workshop that you offered us in July. I think it was important, it was a labor some day, but it helped us explain some of the steps we took in building consensus to get to our plan. And we understand we were constrained on time to get to the implementation details. So we're still committed to that process, and we're committed to a, you know, a plan that ultimately gets all applied water to land. You know, I think Kim did a very good job with some of the charts and maps he put up today, and showing the complexity associated with COM codes. And we feel like, and we've, and we've developed it through our process, that allocations should be tied to the land because the land is a static identifiable, identifiable location and often entity landowner. So that helps accountability with respect to reporting. There's been the, one of the principles you put up in developing an allocation plan for the Oxnard Plain Pleasant Valley basins has been leave no land stranded without allocation. We think if you don't account for all of the land and assigned allocation of land, there's that risk out there, and, and you've heard, seen legal letters addressing that. We feel that when you couple a land-based allocation system, we may need some time to get there with AMI, that you're going to have, you'll eliminate the ability for double dipping or non-reporting. We've seen that in the IAIA data, you know, that the expanse and the complexity of the data is difficult, but your staff has done a good job in, in improving its quality control and contacting landowners and reviewing maps that have been submitted, and we've captured more irrigated land through that process. I think a land-based system is going to prohibit the vesting a penalty blocker. If we look back, where I'm, I'm personally concerned if you, if you try to assign allocation to land based on future activity, future pumping, I think that runs, there's some moral hazard in that, that needs to be thought through carefully. You know, I think if you want a water market to function effectively, and you want to participate in programs that involve pumping shifts, like we've talked about a little bit in the Los Poses Basin, and certainly that'll be, that has been the case historically in Oxnard Plain, and it's probably going to be increased, as, as the members of United have talked about, we're going to need to have a program that allows landowners to, to shift their water sources and supplies without giving up their, their presumed rights to keep operating their facility. So I think a land-based system helps simplify that process, and it helps a water market function because you let the landowner decide. Same thing with accrual. If you're going to, we know there's fallling in our future, we know that we're going to need to save water in order to farm a full cropping cycle in years where we've banked the water that we need, that should be a landowner-based decision, and that, that banking should exist with the land, not have to be worked through a purveyor potentially, because that, that has some complexity. So we're, we appreciate staff's time, we appreciate the consideration you've given us. We're committed to continue to work on it, and we want to get there quicker than, as quickly as possible. So you tell us how we can participate in the future, and we're going to be there.
Mr. Broome, I have a couple of questions for you. Number one, just a comment, I appreciate your pointing out, and, and I'm, because I'm, I'm concerned about that also, and that is, if we do future allocations based on future, you know, water being used by land, we're going to have, you know, a lot of things we have to pay careful attention to, to make sure there's not manipulation of all of that, because the allocations maybe, you know, would be based on that. So it's a sensitive issue, and everybody will have to sort of almost monitor everybody else in terms of that. But the second question I have for you is, is your group generally in agreement with staff that it's premature for us to go to a land-based system at this point in time, that it's just, just not practical?
No, I think the sense of our group is that we could do it. We felt that the IAIA data got us, you know, there. There's always going to be a true-up process in terms of validation. We felt that the, even though the COM codes shift around, that parcel gets its water reported year in and year out. And that's what we focused on, was the water assigned to the parcel, not necessarily the water assigned to the COM code. So I, you know, but there's, there's complexity in the data, and we, anytime you shift to a new allocation system, you're going to have to deal with that complexity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, John Matthews, General Counsel for Pleasant Valley County Water District. I would echo what Alden said about thanking the board and staff for the workshop on the 25th. I thought it was real helpful. While we are not on the Board of OPV, we've attended all the meetings, and they take our input for what it's worth. Just to remind you who Pleasant Valley County Water District is, we straddle both of the basins. About 54% of our district is, overlies the Oxnard Basin, and about 46 over the Pleasant Valley Basin. We serve agricultural water to 11,000 acres of irrigated agricultural land out of the approximately 30,000 in the entire county that's over these two basins. So we make up a little over a third of the irrigated acreage here. The other important thing is our board has taken a position to support the OPV position paper. And while we appreciate the work that staff has done, I think Director Bennett had a great program, and again, I'm not a technician, but the people on the, on the ground and the people that have run the numbers and worked through this stuff have said they think that we can go to a land-based system at this point in time. It's going to take hustle on a little bit, but they believe we can do it. One of the concerns we have with the, the wellhead is what you heard from some of our growers before, is that we have growers within Pleasant Valley that have relied for the last 60 years on Pleasant Valley water, didn't have their own well. So under a wellhead situation, they would have no allocation. And our response has always been, well, trust us, we're the government. And that hasn't gone over real well with some of the growers. They're saying like, hey, look, you're telling me that you're going to own the allocation at the wellhead, and I don't have any well, any allocation for my property. So we're going to have to work through that. The flip side would be an individual who's had a well, pumped a well forever, taken no PV water, and then all of a sudden, it's a wellhead allocation, and that individual's come to PV and say, well, I'm going to pump my well, and I want some of the PV allocation. So we're going to be put in a situation where we're going to have to look at a land-based allocation at some point in time anyway. We agree with staff that that's where we should be moving, to a land base. As they said on page five of their staff letter, that's where we should go. And I think there's some feeling from the board that that's where you want to go. What concerns us is we're going to have to spend a hell of a lot of money to get to a land-based allocation, and if we have an interim wellhead allocation, and we know we're going to go to a land-based allocation, we're going to be neither fish nor fowl. And we, we'd encourage you, if that is your intent, and that's your commitment, spell out how we get there. Not just we, we hope, we wish, we think we're going to get to land based, but tell us what those milestones are to get us there, because we'll work to that. Pleasant Valley is committed to spending the money to get us there. It's not going to be easy for a small staff district like ours, even though we serve a lot of water and a lot of acreage. We're going to have to add people and add technology to get from here to there. And I would hope one of the commitments you would consider would be a resolution as part of your GSP, that you will go to a land-based allocation, spell out how that happens, and to the extent that you can incorporate that into your GSP, that that statement be in the GSP. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, my name is John Urb. I'm with Driscoll's. I handle social environmental impact. My comments in support of the OPV approach and proposal as submitted are driven by our company's philosophy and a desire for the sustainability of the berry business in Ventura County. As operators along coast of California, in the San Joaquin Valley and Northern California, we were vocal endorsers of SIGMA, and stood with Governor Brown when this important piece of legislation was signed into law. The reason for doing so was based on our commitment to responsibly stewarding natural resources, as well as to empower local stakeholders to collaboratively own, develop, and implement their sustainable groundwater management plans. And I want to emphasize that last point about empowering local stakeholders. And what I'm really encouraged by in this meeting, but also looking at some of the footage of the previous meetings, is the depth of consensus around certain principles. The sustainability of the natural resources themselves, certainly, but also when you look at the tying the allocations to the land, I think there's a great consensus developing around that. The devil's in the details in terms of how do we get there, but I feel like with that determination and the recommendations that just came forward, fully back those, and there is, where there's a will, there's a way, and we can get through some of the practicalities of it. In Ventura County, we partner with 22 independent growers who farm over 7,000 acres of conventional and organic berries, and operate three research farms in the area. Driscoll's desires and intends to operate in Ventura County for the long term. So our research stations were heavily, heavily invested in many, many ways to the area. Our support of the OPV proposal is driven by the fact that it's founded on a robust, as I've already mentioned, and inclusive stakeholder process that is practical and fair. The same spirit of collaboration we feel is, that's guiding the OPV group will be required in the development of new water projects and other efforts that may arise to make ag more sustainable in Ventura County. There's no perfect solution, we all realize that. However, the OPV approach best addresses the complex nature of water in the region local to here in an equitable manner. The use of the IAIA reporting period is the most reliable information available that we have today to, to tie back to acreage. And again, to the complexity of water use in the region, the IAIA reporting time period also best reflects current use of water, which balances out impacts from early adoption of water savings technology and crop mix, which within the berries, that's changing very, very rapidly. The proposal not only takes into account today's current needs, but enables flexibility as cropping patterns, farming practices, and varieties continue to evolve. In closing, the broad support for this plan makes it most likely to be successfully adopted and implemented. I know there's a lot of concerns around the legalities and conformance to SIGMA, et cetera. I'm no lawyer, so I'm not going to try to represent that. I know there's quite a vigorous debate around that. But I think having broad consensus underpins what I feel would be successful in terms of its implementation, and less susceptible to costly delays, hopefully. We believe the OPV proposal is well thought out, and best serves the outcomes that will enable the long-term sustainability of our natural resources for the good of the community, but also for the viability of the ag sector and the berry business specifically in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Alfonso Panigua, representing Laguna Farms, and Mr. Jose Martinez. I'm going to tell a story about Mr. Martinez. He came to the US as a strawberry picker for four years, then became a profit share grower for Driscoll's for 10 years, then in 2000 became a partnership with Laguna and Ryder affiliated companies. And now, Mr. Martinez owns about 100 acres, four properties in the Oxnard OPV area, which we think that the support, the OPV plan to continue with our generation, next generation, be continued farming, and we are willing to learn and innovate new ways to save water and use responsible water as a farmer. And Jose agrees that with this ramp down that OPV is proposing, we should be encouraged, high water users to the implement water savings and support the lower water users and smaller farms with greater access to water. We need to support the, with our PV plans, so our children and other farmers like us can have a legacy that continues where in other farming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jurgen Gramco again. I want to address the base period. You know, we started this process in negotiating with the cities and ultimately coming to the 60-40 relationship. And the reason that the cities essentially are entitled to any water is because of prescription. And so, once you have prescription, prescription is adverse use within a minimum of a five-year period. So there is a lengthy period where we've had overdraft, and there could be any number of five-year periods that could be defined as the prescriptive period, or you could define a longer period. But my point is that, once that period is defined, then the agricultural users use that same period to prove their usage during that period of time as well, and that then is called self-help. So the five-year period that's currently in play does not have a 60-40 relationship. If you went to the, to a 10-year period, you, you get to that 60-40 relationship, that 10-year period of, what is it, 2005 to 2014. So I would encourage you to take a hard look at that. If you want to stay with the five-year period and call that the prescriptive period, then need to relook at the relationship between ag and AMI, because under that period, I believe the relationship is something like 63-37, or something more favorable to ag. So that would throw that whole ag-city relationship or discussion back into play. On the, on the surface water that John Lindquist talked about, the 14,000 acre feet, I'm going to call it likely availability for the future, those of us that don't use surface water, by going to the method that includes surface water in the total agricultural pool, are now taking the risk of whether or not that surface water is delivered, a risk that we didn't take before. So, you know, from where I sit, I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with that, but it's not the hill I'm going to die on. But in the current OPV plan, as I understand it, the prospective United surface deliveries are included in the ag allocation. So we take the pumping history for the base period, and then we're going to add 14,000 acre feet. My concern, and then we're going to true up five years down the road to see whether we in fact got 14,000 acre feet every year. And if we didn't get the 14,000, then we were going to make an adjustment and have to ramp down harder to make up for what we didn't get. And my concern is, when are we going to start getting the 14,000? At this point, I think United's policy has been that that forbay's got to get some water now, and that that's its highest priority, nitrate issues and so forth. So I'm worried about sort of pretending that we're going to get 14,000 acre feet, we're not going to get it, we're going to go down the road five years, and now we're going to hit a cliff. And that cliff is going to impact everyone, whereas in the past, those of us that weren't surface users would have simply continued to exercise our overlying pumping rights. So bear all that in mind, I'm not here to, to, to offer a solution to that problem just yet, but I do want to point out that, you know, there are lots of details here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jurgen. Anyone else? With respect to the direction to staff that's requested, is there, obviously, Kim, you mentioned you'll be coming back with more information concerning the methodology for including surface water in the, in the calculations, as well as some further analysis with respect to flexibility. With respect to those other elements, be they base period or ramp down methodology, is there a target by which you need, I guess, either specific direction from this board, or in order to develop the proposal that comes back? from this board, or in order to develop the proposal that comes back, or is there no such target at this point?
Well, you know, the more pieces we can settle down, I think that the faster we can move forward. But I don't know that the absolute selection of the base period is necessary, or not selection of it, is going to delay the development of the rest of the plan in itself. It's just that it's one of the most, I'm sorry, it's just that it's one of the more contentious pieces. As we can lay some contentious pieces down, we can move forward on the other working details that we have to get to, to make it work.
And I guess along the lines, similar to what we're seeing here, I'd be curious to see what the graph looked like with respect to a proportional ramp down with a minimum threshold for, you know, some minimum amount of use, below which nobody gets reduced, and what that would look like for reductions over the 20 years for everybody else. Any other directions, questions, or comments from the board?
Comment, or just maybe it's a question, and maybe it's we need to have our special counsel answer it for us. But there seems to be the assertion in a number of documents and other places where we're hearing that if the cities and ag have agreed on a 60-40 split, and that's based on a certain time period, then, you know, other things that we do need to be based on, like time periods. And is that in fact, something that the agency needs to be held to, in terms of coming up with this allocation plan? Or is it in fact, as long as these various points of this plan are justifiable and agreeable to most, is that a proper direction? So, I have a question about that personally. If we're using a 2010 to 14 base period, and yet there's this inconsistency that doesn't actually match with the 60-40 split, is that a problem? It probably is a problem for the cities. It's just, I think, a question. It seems to be, in other ways too, Mr. Broom indicated that the IAI data gave what they thought was a pretty good idea of current use, and they thought that could be used for delineating land-based allocations. And can that in fact be used, and then still have a different base period? So, I'd like to see some of that stuff brought together in some sort of answer. Was that clear, or just really convoluted?
Is the IAI data granular enough at this stage to allow an analysis of per-acre use?
Not reliable. We staff do not think so. And I think the number that we cited in our previous, is about 20% is completely unreliable, and then the rest will, there'll be questions raised by maybe some of the people who have submitted, exceptions and so forth, and variance processes. We had a lengthy discussion with a group of stakeholders subsequent to the last meeting on this particular issue, although we thought your board had put this to bed. But we walked through in detail the challenges, logistically, and politically, and time-wise, to getting there. So, I hope that, I don't mean to go too long on the answer to your question, so maybe I'll stop right there. The first part of your question, clearly, yes, we can ask your attorney that. I'll talk with counsel here and see what's the best venue to bring the answer back. I don't know if you want to start a debate in here, or if there's even a possibility of bringing it to closed session, so you can explore it more, you know, fully there. I don't know the answer to that, but we could certainly get that for you.
Actually, to the point that John Matthews raised, it's a good one if it's doable, and that is in the, whether it's in the GSP or it's independent of the GSP, I think the consensus of the board is that we do want to move to a land-based system, you know.
Yes, I see.
Well, I'm not so sure. We want to move to a land-based system when we have enough information to make that transition a reliable one. And when we have enough, you know, and when the infrastructure is in place to make that system reliable. I think John's point was, it would be helpful to the stakeholders, and I'm sure, I can see certainly how it would be helpful for Pleasant Valley, if we laid out, you know, what that, what information we're going to need, what infrastructure we anticipate will be required, even in general terms, so they can do some planning for how we get from where we are to where we want to be. We could say as soon as possible, we just may disagree on what the possible, the universe of possible looks like.
So, to that point, we certainly have heard your board say that you want to move there, and that will be a part of the GSP. A resolution seems like belt and suspenders, but if that's what your board directs, high five. And then, we've thrown down the challenge, you know, they say we can get there. A big part of the difference of opinion is who's doing what work. As in here, in your board and the variance process, or can they get there with their customers downstream, where there are no meters or records other than the IAI? And we've challenged them to move in parallel with us, and if they can get there before, you know, we can get to your board, and we can certainly lay out all the things that we'll need to.
Yeah, I don't think it's enough, frankly. I don't think, even if the IAI data was sufficient to tell us a per parcel use, since there's no mechanism in place tomorrow to tell us what that parcel actually used, we're still not ready to go then. So, I think it's someplace we can get to. I think it's going to take time and money. Do...
We have another speaker.
So, I think your direction, this one is clear, we will make sure that it's included in the GSP, and we can get you a series of things that need to be done to get to the land-based allocation system.
Okay. Anything further on item number five?
I apologize for being late to the podium. Chair West, Director of Staff, want to echo everyone else's comment, and thank you all for the time and consideration to this matter. Staff certainly has a very daunting task. But on the last point about IAI's credibility, and staff's response about it being 80% credible and 20% not credible, I'm curious to know where that comes from, and help staff help you understand our industry more. Sigma requires that the GSP use the best science and best data available. Is the IAI 100% accurate? Absolutely not. Will we ever achieve 100% accuracy? I doubt it. But today, it is the best data that the GMA has ever had, as far as comprehensive reporting, and the only time we've ever reported to the parcel. And so, when you read the staff report here, talking about aggregating COM codes, and talking about the changing of COM codes, and the charts that show increased acre year over year, these all need to be taken in context with our industry, and they certainly need to be weighted. And we've asked staff if those changes in COM codes, or those COM codes that report in the aggregate, have been weighted, and they haven't. Neither have the IAI values. And if you weight them, what you will find is the variance is very, very small. For example, if you have a 30-acre farmer who's got an IAI of .5, and a 1,000-acre farmer who's got an IAI of 1, total IAI is not .75. It's much closer to the one, because you have to weight them in terms of its total applied acreage. The same needs to be said for the dynamic nature of the COM codes and these aggregating reporting entities. I've pooled the dozen or so entities that control 90% of the 30,000 irrigated acres. I haven't found one who aggregates their COM code. Certainly, the Gramcos do, the most sophisticated operation out here, and I get it, and I imagine there's a few others. But when you weight these changes, I promise you, they're very small in the big picture. And as far as IAI goes, one of the reasons OPV's plan chooses the most recent three years in history is because we did that work. That is in our plan, where we hired the consultant and the professionals to tie that water to land. And the only way we were able to get that overwhelming consensus to back our plan is because we showed those APN numbers to the landowners, and showed them what a proportional, flat, and hybrid ramp down looked like. And that was the only way we were able to get that vote, because we did that work. And that's why we chose the base period. We did. Any questions? Please feel free to ask. Thank you for your time.
Do you have the directions?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Borchard asked one question on a difference of opinion. There seems to be a difference of opinion on whether the GSP allows the most recent years, or if before the GSP was adopted, had to be. And I think we need that answer, too.
Do you have the direction you need on item number five?
We need to.
Thank you. Let's move on then. We had the discussion under five. Let's move on to item number six, because we're going to lose Robert in 20 minutes.
When we got another meeting.
That's right, I know. Item number six, in the addendum, I guess?
Move to receive and file?
No, it's a... Excuse me?
Well, what happened to the existing item number six?
We haven't got...
Eight. I moved to receive and file number six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? So, the addendum is number seven? Is that correct? There is no seven.
Where did we go?
What difference does it make? Item number seven, is the, noticed as an addendum. Who's got that?
Yeah?
I'll take care of this one, since we're all coming for papers. I'm sorry, we put this on at the last minute. We've lost a number of staff, and we've done a number of calculations and things we need to run through based on questions we received from the community and your board. I, you, your board has randomly a $25,000 budget, which I didn't want to use for a different time without your board knowing yet. So, I thought it better to come to your board and get it not to exceed it now. What we would use is the salary savings associated with the recent departures of GMA staff. And I don't know if you know all of them, but we've had three recently. Have we discussed these with your board?
No.
One's in the audience now, went up to his own mutual. Another one has, is Jody here? From Farm Bureau? But yeah, so they're dropping left and right, and so we're out of, and you can see from Kim's presentation, and all the spelling errors, that he's jamming. Yeah, you had OVP in there several times. But I mean, everybody's turning full crank. So, what we're asking here is that you allow us to find perhaps, oh, and then we lost Dudex person, who is, that you previously gave us permission to use for some extra work in data reduction. And so, it looks like we might have to go out again. So, this item is asking for your board's permission to do so.
Is there a, let me just go right to it. Is there a motion to authorize the executive officer to spend up to $100,000
I have a question.
...within the existing budget?
Is this in addition to the $25,000, or?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
For temporary staffing until new permanent staff are recruited and trained.
No questions.
Is there a motion to that? If we can get the questions, we won't be at one.
Okay. So, moved?
Second.
Any questions? Questions or comments from the public before the board votes on that item? Get a roll call.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Aye.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchard?
Yes.
One question before we adjourn. Do we have a, I think we have a special meeting set for the 14th. Is that the, we planning to?
We need to, we'll have two items, at least two items on that, that we're agenda that we've discussed.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.
I will be back, leave the city early.
Answer your question, sit with yourself specifically.
I was tempted to kind of respond publicly to think about the five-year versus the 10-year. I think it's a five-year period when the ag and MNI split.
Clearly, what I was trying to do is...
I know that.
Whether ag is the age of the IAI, it's good enough. It's just a simple question. Could be to use that data currently as part of it. And then they cite on the base period that was 2010 to 14. So, you've got IAI data that's like within the last three years. You've got a base period of 10 to 14. And then you've got the 60-40 split based on 2003 or something. Three different base periods for three different parts of the allocation. Is that permissible, or should we all report to the same time period?
I mean, to the extent the fight is about how do we divide the ag, whether it's part of the Turbin plan, or the...